Good morning, Senator Yamashita, Senator Mabini, Senator Rodriguez, Vice Speaker Senator Frank, Senator Tony, Senator Duñez. And Senator -- oh, how could I write? She was here sitting the whole time. You're so tiny down there. And Senator Tyron. Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, diez. Un, sí. Maulek, esta?
It facilitates the procedure for obtaining the waiver of a driver's license fees that are currently allowed by law for veterans. The -- under the current statutes, what a veteran has to do, and a veteran is defined as someone who has served honorably in the U.S. military armed forces. And the way the law reads right now is that if I take, for example, myself, a veteran, if I wanted to take advantage of this fee waiver that is granted for a driver's license, I would have to go down to the Veterans Affairs Office in Assan, and I would have to show him either my military ID card or this document that is given to every veteran when he is released from military service called the DD Form 214. And in that document, it states in there the character of the service when he was in the military and shows the period when he was in the military, et cetera. Now, I have to go down there and actually show the guy down to Veterans Affairs Office these documents, and he goes, yes. And then he fills out another form, and then he has to go all the way up to Rev. Tax to show the guy up there so that then he can get the fee waiver. Well, several veterans have come to my office and says, well, why do I have to go all the way down to Assan? Why can't I just go straight to Rev. Tax and show it to the guy who issues the driver's license and say, here's my military ID, which I wouldn't have if I did not serve honorably in the U.S. military? Or here's my DD Form 214, which shows clearly the character of my service as being honorable and that I was, in fact, in the military and was honorably discharged. And so what the Bill 211 does is it basically gives this option for that veteran to go directly to Rev. Tax, show these documents, and then Rev. Tax can issue the waiver of the fees for the driver's license. Or, in the case of those individuals who are not retired from the military, so do not have that Department of Defense Form 2, or do not have a copy of the DD Form 214, then they can go down to the Assan Office to assist them in providing the necessary verifications. So all it does really is it does not take away from anything currently, does not add any more, does not have any economic impact. All it does is just, you know, we just cut that red tape. Now, back then, the law was set up that you had to go to the Veterans Affairs Office because they were trying to collect -- this was a way that they could collect data on the veterans population on the island. We found out from Rev. Tax that they actually collect the same kind of data that Veterans Affairs Office is trying to collect. So in the bill, it says that, you know, when requested by the Office of Veterans Affairs, the Department of Rev. Tax shall provide a listing of veterans' granted fee waivers. And that's another way of accomplishing then getting a, basically a compilation of the veterans that we have on island, at least those who stepped forward and said, you know, I want to take advantage of the fee waiver. I would like to just make one amendment on page two, on line 17. And really, that should read, it should read DD Form 214, comma, or Military Identification Card, add the word, the phrase, Military Identification Card, Department of Defense Form 2, and in parentheses, replace Military Identification Card with the word Retired.
I don't see the clerk here, and I'm not sure if they got that. So would you write that down?
No problem.
Okay.
Did you want to take a recess for that?
No, 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 no. I don't think we really need to circulate it. I'm just, I'm not sure if they were able to get that because --
I'll do that.
And is there any senator who wishes to address the amendment being proffered by Senator Ada? Any objection to the amendment being proffered by Senator Ada? There being no objection, you may proceed, Senator Ada.
That's it, Madam, I mean, Mr. Speaker. I just asked my colleagues to support the bill, and I move that it be put in the voting box.
Thank you. Any senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Anthony Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I can just have a 30-second recess just to speak with the author in some --
All right, short recess.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, after talking with the author of the bill, I have no further questions, and I stand in full support of this Bill 211. Thank you.
No conflict announcement?
Nothing, Mr. Speaker.
Any other senator wish to address the Bill 211 introduced by Senator Tomas Ada? I do, I see the hand of Senator Blossup. Is that a hand up, or is that just one of those? A maybe, your hand is up. I'm not trying to force you to speak, I'm just --
I, and I --
Didn't want you to accuse me of not recognizing.
While I, thank you, Mr. Speaker. While I'm in full support of the legislation, I just want to make sure that, you know, in the process of crossing t's and d's and i's. And I recognize that in, for verification purposes for veterans, that at least, you know, from those that served in the United States Armed Forces, you have the DD 214 or the Identification Card, and then other accepted forms. There is a case right now that I know that is being under review with the Department of Veterans Affairs that calls the question which form the VA or what the VA needs to use to verify an individual's existence in, in this case, it was in the Philippine Scout. I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in this thing, I just want to make sure that we've somehow, we're crossing our t's and d's and i's with the accepted forms of verification here. Just a little bit of a recess to discuss it with the author, please.
Another short recess.
I think this language will suffice for now, and so I'm in support of it.
Thank you very much, Senator Bloss. Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 211? Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 211? Seeing no hands up, the sponsor is invited to close the motion to place Bill 211 in the voting file. Seeing no objection. We're now on Bill 224. Senator --
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And continuing our discussions on Bill 224. Once again, Mr. Speaker, the intent of the legislation is just so that the agency that expends the funds for a person who travels, that is a non-employee of such agency, is just to prepare and publish on the agency's website a justification statement. We just want to make sure that, you know, those that, these agencies on their travel funds, we want to make sure that they're fully utilized to the best of that agency's benefit. So we have GPD, we know that they have a lot of training that goes involved. We want to make sure that it's GPD officers and employees that are able to avail themselves to that training so that they can bring it back and ensure that the rest of the officers that are here on Guam will be able to make, take, take advantage of that training that was given and be able to utilize it for our people. So, Mr. Speaker, it's just to, once again, it's just to prepare and publish on the agency's website a justification statement for travel of non-employees for an agency. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 224? Senator Pangolinian, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if I may ask the author of the legislation to yield to the question, and the question I pose is, is it also the intention that an employee of the government of Guam who works for another agency, who has his travel paid for by another agency, would that situation covered, require then that that person, who though he may be a Guam employee, still need to be posted as having travel paid by the paying agency?
Does the author yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. As to the question from the good senator from Baragada, yes, it does. Yes, it does, sir. Thank you.
Any further question you're recognized on the bill, Senator Pangolinian?
Thank you very much, Ms., Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Speaker. I certainly support the amendment. This is, you know, we tried this back in the 23rd Guam Legislature. We actually had a bill. We went a little further, and what we actually had was the prohibition of one agency or entity paying for employee travel of another agency or entity. And we wanted to do that, and we did that for a little while back then, to make sure that it is the people doing the job in the specific agency that are sent off island to get the training or afforded the opportunity for travel and the ability, rather than having people come in, use their funds of that agency, go to the training, and then they're not working in the day-to-day operation. So I think maybe with a little bit more transparency, better justification, because now people will know who's traveling and who's paying for the travel, they can actually put the disinfectant of sunshine on these kind of things that tend to remain hidden and be based on favoritism or even political connections. I mean, that really is one of the things that has hampered and hindered government operations and the development of its employees, is that travels are dished out as perks rather than as enhancement for the individuals doing the job. And so this would help us kind of go back and focus, let the public know what's going on, let the other employees know what's going on. You know, why is it that I'm in charge of this grant, and then all of a sudden, when the training for this grant comes up, some guy from the governor's office or from some guy from University of Guam or some other place comes in and does the travel for the work that I'm doing and managing the grant? So it does, again, like I said, opens it up, the windows are open, you know, the wind's blowing through and the sunshine's shining through so that we can tell who's spending the money and for what purposes. And it kind of puts everyone on notice that they'll be released for all these special favors and political connections that, when it affects the work that the employees do and their access to employee training and so forth. So I certainly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pangolinian. Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 224? Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 224? Hearing or seeing no hands up, I invite the author to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make an amendment, and I'd like to add the good senator from Baragada, Senator Pangolinian, as a second co-sponsor.
No objection? On the, on the bill in third going to voting file, any objection? No objection. Senator Munir Barnes, you're recognized on Bill 225.
Manana Sizoussa. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill Number 225-31 LS with the double asterisks as substituted by the Committee on Youth Cultural Affairs Procurement, Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, as introduced by myself and you, Mr. Speaker, be put on the third reading, and I'd like to discuss it.
Any objection, seeing none or hearing none?
Mr. Speaker, Sizoussma Sittatlu. This Bill 225 as substituted basically establishes the procurement advantage to service-disabled veteran-owned businesses, Mr. Speaker. And as substituted, it gives qualified service disabled veteran-owned businesses a 5% advantage on any government entity's procurement of supplies or services. Mr. Speaker, I don't know if my colleagues know, but many states in the nation have this, including Hawaii and California, and they've had this statute in place for many, many years. And I'd like to say that this measure as substituted requires that any government entity that intends to procure any supply or service, with the exception of, for professional services, must procure the service from the service-disabled veteran-owned business as long as the price for the supply or service does not exceed 105% of the lower-priced bidder and that the service-disabled veteran operate, I mean, owned business is licensed to do business here on Guam. And this bill also states that the service disabled veteran-owned business must maintain its headquarters here on Guam and that the daily operations of this business is directly owned and operated by a service-disabled veteran who served in the active military naval or air service and who was discharged or released under conditions other than dishonorable discharge and whose disability was incurred or aggravated in the line of duty as demonstrated by what we would call the DD 214 and an award letter from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. This substitute measure, Mr. Speaker, strengthens the residency requirement for eligibility. It clarifies the application of the benefit in association to other advantages, and it ensures the intent of the statute that is properly implemented. And, Mr. Speaker, if I may, and I'd like to just say, as more of Guam's, our Guam's son and daughters return from the Middle East, Afghanistan, and Iraq, we remember that every generation owes a special debt to the men and women who fight for freedom. And I'd also like to say that each time a service-disabled veteran wins a contract through this legislation, we send a message, and that message is, you stood up to serve Guam. Now the people of Guam stand behind you, your livelihood and your aspirations. And I hope, Mr. Speaker, that my colleagues here help support this effort, as I think that it is a good bill for those who've served our country and for some unfortunate reason something happened to them and they were determined disabled through their, the proof of their DD 214. And I ask that my colleagues help me support this bill, as it is good for the veteran community, disabled veteran community. Sina Sissi.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Ada, then Senator Bloss. Then Senator Guthridge.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the bill. Anything that benefits our veterans, I certainly will be in supportive of it. However, if the author would yield, I do have some questions. On page two, line one, it says that the preference will be given for procurement of services to a service-disabled veteran, business owned by a service-disabled veteran, provided that the, his price does not exceed 105% or 5% more, I guess, that's how to be interpreted, of the lower-priced bidder. Do we mean the lowest-priced bidder? I'm not sure I understand what we mean by say, if, so if, if my price, if I'm a bidder and the low, and I'm offering it for $1.05, if the lowest bidder is a dollar, offering it for a dollar, then I think the bill says that I should get that bid because I am at least within that 105%. I'm within 5% of the lower bidder. But what if I'm? So do we really mean to say 105% of the lowest-priced bidder?
Does the sponsor yield?
Yes. Yes, he is correct.
And your answer is yes? She yielded, and her response is yes. It's of the lowest.
Okay, so then on page two, line one, then I think then it'd be appropriate to amend the word so that the word "lower" at the end of the sentence should be changed to "lowest."
Any objection to the amendment being proffered by Senator Tom Ada? Seeing or hearing none?
Now, if the, if the author would yield, again, when we talk about a service-disabled veteran, you'll find that many veterans are given a disability rating of 10%. A lot of them, for, especially a lot of your Vietnam veterans, for just being in country, it is presumed that the Agent Orange that was used there, I guess they have what they call presumptive disability or whatever, are almost always given like a 10% disability. Now, is that 10% disabled veteran get the same advantages as one that has been rated at
Does the sponsor yield? Do you need some time? Yeah, we'll take a short recess.
That the preference is being given to a service-disabled veteran regardless of whether he's rated at 10% or at 100%. So as long as he has been rated as service disabled, then he qualifies. Again, on page two, on line 18, we indicated there that, of course, the service-disabled veteran is someone who served in the active military naval or air service. I think we can strike out the words naval or air service. And when we say active military service, that's really all-encompassing. It could be Army, the Marine Corps, Air Force. And so I think we can remove naval or air, the phrase naval or air, and just it should read active military service.
Any objection? No objection?
No, I just wanted to ask the Speaker, if I may, Mr. Speaker, if I could just ask the Speaker if I could just, if it encompasses all the active military services, then I have no objection to it. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't included in that.
Maybe we should say active U.S. military service.
Yes, that would be better.
That would include Coast Guard, that would include Army, Navy, Air Force.
If there's no objection?
Okay. On line 19, it says that the veteran is one who served in the active U.S. military service and who was discharged or released under conditions other than dishonorable. I would like to move that—we tighten that, you know, just like with the benefits that we give for the waiver of the driver's license fees. That veteran must have served—the character of his service must have been classed as honorable service. So I would like to change that to read "discharged or released under honorable conditions" and just—just delete the phrase "other than honorable discharge." And the reason why I make that distinction is that you may have a veteran who is released given a general discharge. He's not a—it's—you know, it's not a dishonorable discharge. It was—he didn't have a stellar performance either. It was kind of like, "Look, let's just part ways here. Your service hasn't been stellar, but it hasn't been bad enough to be able to throw the Uniform Code of Military Justice against you." I think what we want to reserve these privileges for are for those veterans whose service is characterized as honorable.
On the amendment offered by Senator Adah.
I have no objection.
Any objection by—any senators wish to address the suggested amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, other than those tightening of that language, I—again, I would just want to emphasize my support for this bill and that we need to continue giving preferences to our veterans who have served honorably in the U.S. military service. During the time that they were in the service, they were basically off, serving the country, some of them putting themselves in harm's way and making a lot of sacrifices that many of us civilians did not have to make. And so I think it's only appropriate that we recognize that service and that we should provide them with the advantages—any advantages that we reasonably can. So I urge my colleagues to support Bill 225.
Thank you very much, Senator Adah. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? I'm sorry, I have the listing here. Senator Blas and then Senator Guthridge.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I do stand in support and favor the legislation. There is—if the author though can yield to a question with regards to the time period necessary with regards to the filing of tax returns, it says for a period of at least three years. My concern and my issue is whether or not—is this—three years that can be broken up, you know, one year in the '60s, one year in the '70s, and one year in the '90s, or do we want three consecutive years? Okay, so if that be the case, Mr. Speaker, then what I'd like to do is basically, first off, on page two, line 12, for a period of at least three consecutive years.
Senator Adah, do you wish to be heard on this amendment?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I would have concerns with actually that Section 2A. Let's take, for example—I just got discharged last month, and I want to start up a business. Obviously, I wouldn't have met—I can't meet this qualification, because I don't have—I haven't been here three years to file taxes. I would—I would instead suggest that we—that that requirement, Section 2A, should be simply that the business concerned is licensed to do business on Guam, period. Otherwise, we exclude the guy who just got out of the service this year.
Mr. Speaker, just so that we can make this discussion cleaner, I'll withdraw my amendment, so that we can go and address the concern that he's got.
Okay. Did you wish a few minutes? Let's take a short recess.
On line 11, the words "and has filed tax returns with the Department of Revenue and Taxation for a period of at least three years."
Okay, why don't we take a few minutes to recess and let's try to work out a couple of these issues? Thank you. Mr. Speaker, Tom Adah, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I—I'd like to just offer additional amendments to further tighten the language. And on page two, line 11, the requirement there should be simply that the business concerned is licensed to do business on Guam. So he's got—so he—he's gone to revenue tax and applied for a business license. That's the first requirement. And then to delete the words "and has filed tax returns with the Department of Revenue and Taxation for a period of at least three years." So we'll remove that requirement, because in the next page, it actually has that requirement already. It has the requirement that he must have filed individual tax returns on Guam for a period of at least three years. So that will address then the concern of, let's say, that veteran who just got out of the service in January. Now, while he was in the service, and if he enlisted in the service or entered the service and claimed Guam as his home of record, then every year, he files taxes claiming Guam as his home of record. And then that tax that he actually paid comes back to Guam in the form of Section 30 money. So—the first amendment then is on line 11 and 12, removing the words—the phrase "and has filed tax returns with the Department of Revenue and Taxation for a period of at least three years."
Okay, that's the first amendment.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Let's takeum sariatum. All right. Any objection to that amendment? Your next one, please.
Okay. Again, on the same page. Okay. Again, on the same page, down on line 20, where it reads, "and whose disability was incurred or aggravated in the line of duty as demonstrated," it really should be just, the term that is used is, "whose disability is service-connected." So he may have broken a leg pretty severely jumping out of an airplane. That was part of his duty, was service-connected. He may have been given a disability rating as a result of that. So-
On the amendment, line 20, service-connected, any objection? Your next one.
On line 22, it should read DD 214, and add the words, "certified by," and award letter from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. Normally, the Veterans Affairs, U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs would issue a letter saying, "Okay, we've reviewed your packet. Your claim for disability for the following, for the following ailments has been approved and given a rating of 10 percent, 100 percent."
Okay, can you, you'll write that down because I can see they're having problems following.
Yes, I will get with them.
Okay, thank you. On that amendment, any objection?
And then finally, on page three, Mr. Speaker, on line three there, I think the concern here is that the preference is given really to Guamanians. Guamanians who have lived on Guam, at least as evidenced by having filed individual tax returns on Guam for a period of at least three consecutive years. So even when he was off in the military, serving the country, when tax time comes, he files a return, claims Guam as his home of record. That's year one. In the second year, third year, he does the same thing. He would have met that requirement. If we don't put the term consecutive, he, you know, he could have lived in Guam in 1952, went back, lived in the mainland, and then in 1981, he came back during the economic boom, filed an individual tax return, and then now we got another boom coming up, he files another individual tax return. So we're saying for a period of at least three consecutive years.
On that amendment.
That's all the amendments that I have as a speaker. Thank you.
Please work with the clerk's office staff, please. Senator, Senator Palacios, I have Senator Guthers before you, unless you wanted to speak on the amendment. Oh, on the last amendment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the last amendment. Senator Palacios on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, of course, I support that, but to just put clarity to that on the last amendment, which says at least three consecutive years, and I would like it, I guess, to include immediately preceding the bid for the procurement of supply or whatever that is. So that, without that, then any, any three, it could be any three years of filing of individual income tax. But I think the intent here is to make sure that the three years preceding, immediately preceding the participation in this bidding process, I think that's the language that I actually like to put in.
On the amendment proffered by Senator Palacios to the other amendment.
How are you going to say your answer?
Let's, let's take a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just clear my mind then, what is the intent? I mean, if any, any, any three consecutive years of filing in Guam would qualify, no matter what block of calendar year is that, if that the intent, I have no objection to that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
All right, thank you very much. So withdrawing that, there's no objection?
No objection, thank you.
On the bill, any other, Senator Guthers?
I'm okay, thank you.
Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Hearing none, the author is invited to close.
Si, duez, masi, tatlu, Speaker Cruz for giving me the opportunity to close on this bill. First of all, I'd like to extend my, to my colleagues who helped me amend this bill to make it, to strengthen the bill, to make it, to give its clarity. I'd also like to add, if I may, at this time, Senators Tom Ada and Frank Blos, and Senator Guthers, and Palacios, if they'd like to, if there's no problems of putting them as sponsors, co-sponsors to the, to the main bill.
No, hearing no objection.
Yeah. And again, Mr. Speaker, in short, I just want to say that this is truly saying that each time our service-disabled veteran wins a contract through this legislation, we do send that clear message that our veterans have stood up for Guam, they've served our island well, and that we, in return, appreciate what they've done, and we support their livelihood and their aspirations. And I do want to say thank you to all those who support it, and like to move it down to third reading for the, I mean, voting file.
On the motion to move the bill to voting file. We're now on Bill 228. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 228, it proposes to make just a minor technical amendment. About four months ago, Mr. Speaker, we amended the statute that established the Civilian Police Review Commission. And in that statute, we actually allow, it permits the Guam Police Department to provide administrative and logistic support, because the earlier statute forbids that. But later on, when that one was set upon continuing review for the implementation of that, we found this other statute, which is 78-106, that continues to say that meetings cannot be held in any premises of the Guam Police Department. And it is just to amend that so that it is consistent with the, with the new public law that we passed, which is a public law 31-33. And it's just going to allow now that the commission shall meet every month, and that these meetings now may be held in any building in which the department is located, including but not limited to police precincts. Because that's the same language in the other statute when we updated that, that commission. So it's, again, it's a technical amendment to allow the Guam Police Department to do that.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any objection to the bill? Do you wish to move it to the voting files?
I move to move it down to the voting file. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Bill 231, Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Si, duez, masi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move Bill 231-3COR, or 31COR, to the, to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on the bill.
Hearing no objection, you're recognized to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this bill proposes to add to the work that was initially done by the late Senator Edward J. Cruz with regards to trying to provide a resource for our people for off-island referral. We all know that when we travel, most of us are able to take benefit of what you would normally term the frequent-flyer-mile program of the airlines which we travel on. And the benefit of being a member of their frequent-flyer program is that you accumulate the miles that you travel on that airline. And at some point, you would have enough miles within the program structure where you could get a free ticket. And so this late Senator Edward Cruz looked at this and saw all of the Guam travel that was occurring, and that how can we utilize that benefit to help our government and our people? And so he initially proposed the creation of the Medical Referral Mileage Bank Program, where we would capture the miles for official travel of government employees and government officials who get their travel paid for by government dollars, whether local or federal, and capture the miles that they travel on the airlines, pool all of those miles into an account, and then use the mileage to pay for or procure free tickets under the mileage program of the eight airlines that, that these travel occurs on. And so he basically set up that process and program, but we haven't been able to maximize the benefits of that program. We haven't been able to capture the miles that are actually traveled and credited to the government of Guam-paid traveler. And so this would work towards, trying towards doing that, so that we're able to maximize the benefit that we can have for those of our, in our community who need to travel and save the government a little bit by utilizing the miles instead of dollars to pay for that travel. And so what this does is it revamps the program and allows the crediting of, one of the impediments was how do we capture that miles? And we spent a couple of years trying to work with the depart, with the airlines to set up a single GovGuam account, you know, One Pass Account mile, for lack of another program, but a One Pass Account in which all the government travel can be deposited. Now, the airlines just won't work with us. They won't allow us to set up that One Pass, one singular account where we can deposit all the miles. And, you know, we've tried to work with them, we cajoled, we threatened, we've bribed, but they won't do it. They just refuse to do it because of some internal policy that says they're, they can't. But they were able to do so for a partner that they had, which is a nonprofit, the Azuda Foundation. So they're able to, and that, let me just backtrack. And so when we, when we want to now have that mile that's credited to the traveler transfer, they said, "You'll have to transfer that mile to a government account. You can't credit it immediately to that government account." There's a fee attached to that, and that fee could go from $7,500 to $400 to transfer that miles, which makes it really prohibitive and not worth the effort if we have to pay for those miles in that form. But they have a partner in the Azuda Foundation that can receive donations of miles for free without a fee. So they waive the fee if the traveler transfers miles to the Azuda Foundation. Now, the Azuda Foundation have been, over the years, working with the government of Guam, the Medical Referral Office, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, where they're now actually able to use miles donated to them to procure the tickets for patients that are referred off-island. And so what this allows us to do now, or requires now, is that the traveler that now has his travel paid for by government, as part of clearing out his travel, his trip report, we all, those of us who have traveled in government, have to clear out our per diem, clear out our ticket, file our itinerary, file our boarding passes when we return. And so part of that process of clearing your travel voucher and travel documents after completing the miles is that you go online and you click your One Pass account, or the, if you have one, and then donate that miles to Azuda Foundation, and it's credited for free. And then you use that as validation that you have now transferred the miles from your personal account to this government, semi-government account at the Azuda Foundation. Now, the Azuda Foundation and DOA will track those miles, and all of the miles that are then donated to Azuda through this program will be segregated. And that will be used for the benefit of the MIP program at the Department of Public Health to pay for off-island travel for MIP patients who are transferred off-island. In addition, they can use it for those that may not be referred off-island under MIP but are referred off-island, working through the, through the Medical Referral Office, access the Azuda Foundation program, and also get credited miles to procure their ticket or their escort. And so this allows us to capture the actual miles. We do have a program now in which the government of Guam actually is able to capture miles for travel, but it's for the money you spend, a dollar for dollar. We, the Department of Administration, actually has a credit card with one of the local banks in which they charge the travel on that credit card, and for every dollar you charge on that card, one mile occurs and is credited to the GovGuam account. So we do have a single GovGuam account. But believe it or not, the airlines won't even let us transfer the, the miles that are paid for by federal grants from the traveler to that One Pass account without a fee. The only avenue we have to not incur that transfer fee is their partner, the Azuda Foundation. So this requires the travelers then to access that. And so this is the process that we're setting up, trying to ensure that we capture these miles, we use them for the benefit of our, of our residents in need who have to go off-island for medical care, try to save them a little bit of money by, by allowing frequent flyer miles to be used for these off-island referrals. And I also wanted and took the liberty of proposing in this- Now, the Azuda Foundation have been, over the years, working with the government of Guam, the Medical Referral Office, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, where they're now actually able to use miles donated to them to procure the tickets for patients that are referred off-island. And so what this allows us to do now, or requires now, is that the traveler that now has his travel paid for by government, as part of clearing out his travel, his trip report, we all, those of us who have traveled in government, have to clear out our per diem, clear out our ticket, file our itinerary, file our boarding passes when we return. And so part of that process of clearing your travel voucher and travel documents after completing the miles is that you go online and you click your OnePass account, or the, if you have one, and then donate that miles to the Azuda Foundation, and it's credited for free, and then you use that as validation that you have now transferred the miles from your personal account to this government, semi-government account at the Azuda Foundation. Now, the Azuda Foundation and DOA will track those miles, and all of the miles that are then donated to Azuda through this program will be segregated, and that will be used for the benefit of the MIP program at the Department of Public Health to pay for off-island travel for MIP patients who are transferred off-island. In addition, they can use it for those that may not be referred off-island under MIP, but are referred off-island, working through the, through the Medical Referral Office, access the Azuda Foundation program, and also get credited miles to procure their ticket or their escort. And so this allows us to capture the actual miles. We do have a program now in which the government of Guam actually is able to capture miles for travel, but it's for the money you spent, a dollar for dollar. We, the Department of Administration, actually has a credit card with one of the local banks in which they charge the travel on that credit card, and for every dollar you charge on that card, one mile occurs and is credited to the GovGuam account. So we do have a single GovGuam account, but believe it or not, the airlines won't even let us transfer the miles that are paid for by federal grants from the traveler to that OnePass account without a fee. The only avenue we have to not incur that transfer fee is their partner, the Azuda Foundation. So this requires the travelers, then, to access that. And so this is the process that we're setting up, trying to ensure that we capture these miles, we use them for the benefit of our residents in need who have to go off-island for medical care, try to save them a little bit of money by allowing frequent flyer miles to be used for these off-island referrals. And I also wanted and took the liberty of proposing in this bill that the program be named after the late Senator Edward J. Cruz, Eddie Cruz, who initially thought about it, introduced the legislation to make this possible. And so that, Mr. Speaker, is the proposal before this body in this bill, and I ask for the consideration and support. Thank you, Sisus Masih.
Any senator wish to be heard on Bill 231? I see Senator Guthers and then Senator Adda, Tony Adda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I want to commend the author of the bill for his work in putting us together. I remember a number of years ago, while a professor at the University of Guam, I embarked on a research project with my students to try to find out how much travel actually occurs in the government of Guam on a yearly basis. And I was really amazed at our findings, you know. It took us a while to get the information, because it was like pulling teeth to get the executive branch at that time, even the legislature, and believe it or not, the most difficult branch of government to get travel information from was the Courts of Guam. At that time, the Courts of Guam invoked security reasons not to share information on travel, who traveled where and why. And basically, the information we wanted from all the branches and departments of government and offices, et cetera, and boards was, is there any travel that occurs within your department or agencies or boards? If so, how much was spent over a 12-month period for the last 10 years? We wanted a 10-year cycle of reports. Who participated in the travel? Where did they go? What did they accomplish? What was the breakdown of expenses? Were there any reimbursements after the trips, et cetera, et cetera? And we were quite amazed at the findings. There's a lot of travel that goes on. I think GovGuam is so large when it comes to travel that we could really justify having our own travel agency to cut costs, to be honest with you, the government Guam Travel Agency. But on this particular matter before us, it relates to the research that we did, because we wanted to try to find a way to pool the miles, the frequent flyer miles that occurs from travel, to benefit the government and its programs. And of course, at that time, the obstacle was the airlines did not want to do that. They did not want to be able to have to pool the miles from government travelers and keep track of it, and segregate it, and all this. So it was very difficult, and even though the legislature passed a law years ago to mandate that, as you know, and most of us know, it's been very hard to get it done, primarily because of the airlines, their reluctance to work with us to do that. So now we have a bill that found a way, perhaps, to do this, but I only have one problem with the bill, I brought it to the attention of Speaker Ben, Senator Ben. It designates one nonprofit organization to do this, and I know it's a wonderful nonprofit organization, they have a good staff, they do a lot of good things, but, Mr. Speaker, we have so many other nonprofits in the community that could also benefit from such a program directly, not having to go through another nonprofit to get help. I'm thinking of groups like the Guam Cancer Society, the Guam Heart Association, the Guam Chapter, the American Red Cross, and other similar entities. There are other entities that have needs, who possibly could also benefit assisting their clients through this program. I was informed by the author of the bill that the reason only one nonprofit was designated was because of some familiarity with this effort, and they also help other nonprofits. But I don't know, I don't know if I would want to support just one nonprofit being the direct beneficiary of this program. So that's my major concern with the bill. If it also provided for the opportunity for other nonprofits to directly participate, then I would be more inclined to support it. So maybe the good author can enlighten us here, and maybe we can amend the bill to say that if other nonprofits are able to arrange this, then they can be accommodated. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Senator Adda, then Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The author will yield to questions.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to know whether the author would know, how does the federal government address the frequent flyer miles that are, that they receive for official travel of their federal employees?
My understanding is that the federal government does not accrue that, I think it just lets the employees keep it. I think, at one time, it did try to capture all of those miles, but the federal government is so large that the cost of trying to capture an account for all of their travel was not, they had determined was consuming more manpower and hours than what they were getting. So for that purpose, they kind of let the different agencies handle it, but they do not require that it be transferred or tracked.
I see. And then...
Senator Guthers, you're recognized. Is your mic on?
Because, as the speaker said, it's so large and unwidely, it's very difficult for them to track all of these miles. They also started to enter into contracts with airlines to get reduced rates for government airline travel in lieu of frequent flyer points. In other words, if they enter, if the federal government enters in contracts with airline B, C, or D to get better rates for government-purchased travel, because they do not include airline miles, that also has happened. That is ongoing. As a matter of fact, that occurs, and it is occurring. So there's two ways they do it. One is they, they don't try to retrieve the miles if it's just a purchase of a ticket, but the federal government has entered into contracts with airlines based on the bidding process to get reduced costs for official government travel at the federal level. So no miles accrue, but the tickets are a lot cheaper. And I would think that that might be an option for GovGuam also, to negotiate government travel prices in order to get better rates, so that we can spend less money. That's also an option. Thank you very much, without any miles accruing.
Thank you very much for that information, Senator Guthers. Senator Adda, do you wish to continue?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, in general, support the concept of this, of this bill, and I think, I think it's good. I know that, I was looking at this early on in the year, because we've seen a lot of people from our community who need that type of assistance to get on a plane and seek some medical attention. I also share the concerns that Senator Guthers had brought up about if we're able to expand the scope of organizations that could, that could manage this program as well. And so I'll see if we could work with, you know, with the author and Senator Guthers to see how we can do that. But the other question I have is if the author would yield, is whether the current nonprofit organization has some type of reporting requirements that would show us, you know, what is, you know, what mileage are being deposited?
Senator Pangolino, did you yield, the question is, does Azuda have a reporting requirement as to how many miles it's receiving from donors?
Yes, actually, there is a relationship now between Department of Administration, the Medical Referral Offices, and the Azuda Foundation for some of the, arranging some of the miles that are utilized using the credit card miles. So there is a system there, and we work with the Department of Administration on this to, and the Azuda, to understand their processes, and so there would be a reporting requirement. I'm not sure if it's in the bill, I don't recall immediately, but there is a way to track it, and we're requiring them that that be tracked, and DOA is able to do that, according to them. The other thing, again, the reason why we're working with the Azuda Foundation and through MIP is that who gets, who gets the free ticket? The reason why we're going through the MIP program is that there's an eligibility requirement there, and so that it's for those individuals. And so we wanted to limit it to that, because we didn't want the tickets to be used for any other purpose and for any other travel, rather than the medical referral side, and only for those who are in need. You know, we didn't want a free ticket going to somebody who's making $100,000 a year. And so that's why we limited to the MIP program at Public Health with regards to the beneficiary of this medical referral process, and Azuda is, has a system in place that works with the MIP program at this time.
Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Speaker Pangolino. I just have another question. On the, when we say we're working with the MIP program, I remember, I recall a situation where there was a patient, an individual who was under another program within the department, not MIP, I believe it was the, I forget which other program, but was not eligible to get a ticket to go off-island, because he wasn't under MIP, but, and then there's that, you know, there's this small difference of, you know, what the MIP program, you know, what you're eligible for, and under the, I believe it's Medicaid. And so is that something that we would be able to maybe expand and not just leave it with the MIP patients? Okay. So if I could, Mr. Speaker, work with the author to see what kind of amendments we can put together?
Okay, then, then the chair will entertain a motion that we recess until 2:00 to allow everybody to work this out and everybody to go to lunch.